Good evening, it is five thirty one, this is Robert Stevenson and want to open our first meeting of the year for the school committee after our retreat a couple of weeks ago. So can I get a motion open to me?
Somewhere.
Second.
Alright, all in favor of holding the meeting, can I get a show of hands? Amy let the record show the motion passes six zero zero. Can I get everybody to stand for the flag of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on your god, indivisible, infinite, and just as strong.
Great, glad we remembered that after the summer.
They're getting colds.
Yeah. Who's cold, you getting cold?
I'm just like a cough.
I have a change jacket on, I have a sweater on. I have long sleeves underneath this. He's got a sweater on.
I do, I'm cold, I'm not hot. Good shape. Alright, secretary's report in your packets are the meetings from our retreat slash meeting on the twenty fourth of August. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes? Sorry. Any questions on the minutes? Any questions, can I get a show of hands or accept the minutes? Good job. Okay. So. Let the record show the motion passes five zero one. We've got some warrants that are going around here, there's three of them, if you guys can take care of those tonight, I'm sure Amy will be very happy with that. Superintendent Willard, do we have any correspondence for this evening?
No.
You know? Alright, next, public comment, we have nobody here to do public comments, so we're gonna move on. Student advisory report.
Oh boy.
So, this is the most exciting part of our meeting, but I want to introduce Lucas, he's our our new representative from the school. Marissa will be still with us this year, right? So Lucas, I'm gonna hand it over to you, I don't know if you have anything prepared, but it's all you right now, sir.
Marissa sent me a copy of the list here, not much going on here, first of all, the students are settling into their first week back at the high school. We're, it says happy, but you know, it's more of a middle ground as far as being back and ready for another year. Again, not sure about ready, but it happens.
It's happening.
It's happening. All sports have officially begun their seasons. Though with the rain this week, every sport besides girls soccer has had a game postponed. The rest of the week is looking much better. Girls volleyball has a home game versus hand and charter, and boys soccer went away to Monson to play today. The senior class will be hosting the painting parking spots event this weekend. The students are very excited and it says olive, but not me, I'm assuming that means Marissa. Will be going around taking pictures of everyone's final products. And finally, class elections are coming up within the next two weeks.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And his voice may be familiar, if you have ever been in a public regional school in the morning. He does the morning announcements at public regional school.
Every day?
Quite entertaining.
Every other week or so, sometimes I get replaced.
Very entertaining.
Very good.
And you also spoke to us at the, was it the connections?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
He's part of the master plan.
Oh wow, wow, you are involved.
Thank you.
This is.
One might say an overachiever.
You don't see, you don't see detail by truck.
Oh yeah, so are you a junior or a senior?
I'm a junior.
That's exciting. And yeah, so the girls actually did play last night.
Yep.
They did lose, but it was zero zero at half against Easton Meadow, which is a tremendous accomplishment. They ended up, they had five scores like four and a half, there's kind of goals that snuck through, ball was wet, it was tough, but they've got a game tomorrow night, so so far so good. Thank you for that update, Lucas.
You're welcome.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Alright.
JB soccer lost too, just.
They had a tough game.
Well, we scored.
Alright, yeah. So we are at, now Superintendent Willard, you're up, educational presentation.
Yeah, so this is the district strategic plan, not much was changed. We are going to be doing, this is usually a five-year plan, this is the fifth year of our plan. We are going to be going out into the community, inviting community in, going to various churches, various neighborhoods to solicit some information around our vision, our mission, and our core values. To make sure they're still in line with all of our stakeholders. Our strategic objectives are not changing. Most of our, right now are mandated by the state, these are not issues we cannot be working on. As you know, DEID is a huge issue with social emotional learning, with equity and making our schools a safe place for everybody. We also have to have a guaranteed and viable curriculum that is our main job as a school district, is to educate our students with the best possible resources, with the best technology, in a way that has them solving problems with a clear purpose. And not just collecting information, a lot of what we did when we were in school was to memorize. We don't focus on memorization anymore, because as you can see, anything you need to memorize, you can simply just ask Siri now. So what our students now meet, the big change from when we were in school to when students are in school now is they have to take information and they have to do something with it. And they have to apply it in different ways, take the information, think about it critically, see how it relates to other things, it's not just simply memorizing, but really application of skills that are transferable. So that's the whole purpose of the way that we teach now, because as you know, the real world requires a lot of creativity and flexible thinking, and that doesn't come from memorization. So we talked about our high impact initiatives. One of the big things that we're doing is we're going to be updating our policy book with the support of mass. The other thing that we're doing is we're in year two of our science of reading initiative and we, our teachers have just finished their ten module, they had ten modules to build their foundation for the science of reading, and those were just finished as we return to school. And we are going to be looking and piloting phenomenon-based science curriculum and also begin the process of reviewing, getting a core curriculum for our seven through twelve ELA program. Technology, we do have a new technology director, I've met with him more than I've ever met with any technology director, and he actually explains a lot to me Ted, about the O N Ts and about how it all works. And right now, one of the things he's uncovering is we really have to get a good handle on our infrastructure and our network. And that is going to be a bulk of his job for this year, it's not super exciting, it's not the super glamorous stuff. But it's really the foundation on which we are going to be progressing into innovative pathways at the regional school and hopefully bringing in some augmented reality, virtual technology for our students in the future. So really getting a handle on our infrastructure and owning it, not having to have an outside person come in and explain how it works if something goes wrong. But really understanding it so it's an in-house knowledge, not a vendor knowledge. And again, the engaged learning is really just making sure that our students are not sitting there receptively absorbing information, but actively participating in their lessons.
Ben, under engagement, references made to instructional coaches and I know they're vital part of kind of the communication between administration and our educators. I also know that positions have fluctuated over the years, so can you just kind of refresh my memory on how many instructional coaches we have for which subjects of what grade levels?
So we have what we consider two at the regional school.
Okay.
Amber Hall and Ben Taglari, Ben Taglari really works across the whole district, he was our technology coach, which was brilliant, because he came on right before we went into remote learning and he was a huge resource for all of our teachers as we rolled out Microsoft. So he is working closely right now with our director of technology, but so Amber is, she's more pedagogical.
Okay.
Because you really can't have content specific at the regional school, because it's more about lesson design and lesson format, as opposed to teaching even content, they're content experts at the regional school. At the elementary level is different, we're not content experts. We, they, I say we, because I was. We teach everything. We teach science, we teach social studies, we teach reading, we teach math, we teach everything. So we now have a science and math coach at that, is Beth Grady, who's been here from the beginning. And then we do have the, we did fill the reading coach that was not filled last year with Laura Markowitz, who was one of our reading interventionist specialist teachers that was here at Powdermilk. So she's been part of the whole reading initiative from the beginning, so there was no catching her up. She has established relationships with the teachers, she was a teacher, so that makes it an easy transition for her. She just has to build the trust, she has the trust. And I think that's really, really makes our coaching model work, is taking people from within our schools, our own teachers, and having them work with the teachers, instead of bringing in outside people.
So we basically have two for Woodland Power Room.
Yes.
And then two for the high school, and basically if the younger grades, it's broken down more into content-based specialists.
Yes.
And.
Math and science.
Math and science, and then ELA, and where's social studies falling into that?
It really doesn't right now. We're not, it's more of the science of reading, because it's such a heavy reading initiative and it's such a pedagogical shift from balanced literacy.
Sure.
To a much more scripted approach, a much more scientific approach to teaching reading, using data, looking at where the kids are. Not just say, oh, I'm gonna teach this strategy, I think the kids are here, no, it's like real database now and data-driven. So she's really working with the teachers on how to shift that practice. And that's not an easy shift, like they talk about the way you teach reading, it's kind of like a religion.
Yeah.
And our teachers are switching religions right now, because they get in these gaps and they are balanced literacy people. And so to make this shift is hard for them, and we have to validate that and support them as we do this.
Teachers will need help with that when the transition is made to the science curriculum as well, it's a similar pedagogical shift.
It is.
So.
Very similar to our math at the elementary level.
True, true.
So, but yes, that was a huge shift this way.
Thank you. I know, I know the coach has been here for a while, but the kind of the positions and the focus has changed, so I just kind of needed to refresh.
So one of the neat things about education and what I love about it is, because I think about where I started twenty nine years ago when we're in now. So when I started teaching, it was always the teacher is I do. And then with the kids, it's we do. And then it's the gradual leads to you do. Well, as time has evolved, we're realizing that that model works really well for reading. It is not effective in science and math. So that, in science and math, it's more you do. Explore, learn, let's talk about it, let's facilitate it and learn through doing. But reading is much more, there is a very scientific developmental progress and steps to get to build that foundation of reading, it's very sequential, it's not free-flowing like math. So, that's what we are learning about education, now that we can read brainwaves and read, it's very scientific.
Only took thirty years, right?
I'm sure it'll change.
And I'm sure thirty years from now, it'll be very different than where we are today.
Those kids' brains are changing, they're changing, it's so incredible, yes.
If anybody got any other questions on this? Alright, thank you for your question. Alright, policies, we don't have anything yet, I did actually have a chance to talk to Liz LeFond today. She owed me a phone call and we kind of cut off, they do have the information upstate. They are looking at it, they have a meeting tomorrow, like a staff meeting, she is anxiously hoping that we can get started sooner than later, just as a fun fact, there's actually twenty districts in the state doing what we're doing this year. Liz has got three of them in her section, so there's another seventeen on the east side of the state, so we are not alone in sort of revamping and going through all of these policies. So.
And is our first policy submitting next two weeks from now?
It's scheduled to be two weeks from now. Hopefully we'll have some more information, I'm kind of hoping that maybe they're ready, Liz can come to that meeting.
Okay. Do you know what section they're starting with?
I've no idea.
Okay. The beginning? No, section A I think has like one policy in it maybe, probably B.
I have no idea, she's, she mentioned something about, we got all the information, they looked at A, I don't know if she's doing it in sequential order, but she'll have an update, I'll get an update next week, so she'll have an update, she'll, she has her meeting tomorrow, so everybody hold on, because it's gonna be, Pam and I are gonna be burning. We're gonna get in some frequent flyer miles with all the changes that we're gonna be bringing on board. Alright, so with that thirty second rest superintendent, I'm gonna you for action items for tonight.
Move to approve the twenty-two twenty-three clause PTO SRS Banner Club and Business Education Alliance fundraisers on the attached forms recommended.
Everybody any questions on this?
Hey, I'm going to let you know before we move on, I did return one, because it was for the raffle baskets that I don't know if you've ever been to the BEA fundraisers at the end of the year. But in order to do a raffle basket or a fifty-fifty, there's really specific steps you have to take, you have to report it to the state, so another one will be coming for the BEA, it was submitted, but it wasn't ready to go in front of the.
Anybody any questions on this? Alright, can I get a show of hands to accept the motion? Amy let the record show the motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the twenty-two twenty-three I State Field Trip to Hartford, Connecticut to the ACM Aerospace Alley Aerospace Alley Future Workforce Opportunities Fair, recommended.
So.
Any questions on this?
Anybody know what this is?
No idea.
Looks cool.
Does it say what group? I'm assuming, I don't know. Which is Margiade, is this, is this like a junior senior thing, Lucas, do you know anything about this?
I've never heard of this, but that's what it sounds like to me, yeah.
No, I've heard of it.
It's an annual fifteen, they do it every year.
And I think any kid can go to it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's fantastic, I've heard it's actually fantastic.
Very cool. Alright, get a show of hands to approve this? Amy let the record show motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve twenty-two twenty-three home education plans HS twenty-two twenty-three dash thirty-two to HS twenty-two twenty-three dash thirty-nine recommended.
So.
Second. Any questions on this? What, how many are we up to, I'm assuming thirty-nine, that's a pretty easy way for us to count how many of these are back? Is that higher or lower than we were last year?
Would not tell you.
Lower.
Lower, a lot or a little? So we've got a lot of kids that came back?
Or a lot of people.
Oh, okay.
They keep coming in.
How long do they have before they need to submit them?
They should have already submitted them, Amy sends out, does her due diligence and sends out letters, but we accept them as they come in throughout the course of the year.
So if they don't, do we keep track or track tally of them, if they don't send them in, then we've got, look at warning letter or something like that that goes on?
We really don't do, Amy, do you do a follow-up letter if we haven't received somebody who did a homeschool previous year and haven't received them?
Yeah.
Because we're still technically responsible for them, right?
And if they don't, no.
No.
They're not enrolled.
They're not enrolled and they don't submit, because we're responsible to oversee the homeschool. Because you've got, you've got to approve it, but if they don't
That's it.
They're just sort of
In the room.
On their own? Okay.
It's a very uncomfortable feeling.
Yeah. Because, so where does truancy and making sure that you send your kids to school fall into this?
Great question, I was just thinking, Amy and I were talking about that, so if we know of somebody we can file something, because you have, if we know of a child that's not enrolled, they have to be enrolled.
Right, so if
Because that's when we would file.
So if we have a list of all the homeschool ones that we had last year, and we've got a list of all the kids that are in school wouldn't we be able to balance those and go, okay, they're missing?
Sometimes they move out of state.
They move, they go to, a lot of kids sometimes go to Westfield or Community Christian School or yeah, they move out of our district or.
So is there a way, so other than, it's really a very difficult, it doesn't sound like a real simple process for us to know?
It's not.
Alright, can I get a show of hands to approve all the homeschool things tonight? Amy, the record show that this passes six zero zero.
Be it resolved that the South Creek Town and Ranville Regional School Committee hereby extends its congratulations to Laura Harbor in recognition of six years of teaching excellence, we hereby convey our sincere appreciation for your valuable efforts, dedicated service, and assistance rendered, which has enhanced the image of the South Creek Town and Ranville Regional Schools and a record of these resolutions shall be permanently entered into the minutes of this school district, recommended.
So.
Second. Questions, comments? Can I get a show of hands to accept the motion? Record show the motion passes six zero zero.
Be it resolved that the South Creek Town and Ranville Regional School Committee hereby extends its congratulations to Mary Patricia Cullen in recognition of twenty years of teaching excellence, we hereby convey our sincere appreciation for your valuable efforts, dedicated service and assistance rendered, which has enhanced the image of the South Creek Town and Ranville Regional Schools and a record of these resolutions shall be firmly entered into the minutes of this school district, recommended.
Same words? Second.
Second.
Show of hands to accept the motion. Record show the motion passes six zero zero.
Be it resolved that the South Creek Town and Ranville Regional School Committee hereby extends its congratulations to Phyllis King in recognition of thirteen-two years of clerical excellence. We hereby convey our sincere appreciation for your valuable efforts, dedicated service, and assistance rendered, which has enhanced the image of the South Creek Town and Ranville Regional Schools and a record of these resolutions shall be firmly entered into the minutes of this school district, recommended.
Second.
Any comments on this?
No.
Can I get a show of hands to accept the motion? Let the record show this motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the South Creek Town and Ranville Regional School District Strategic Plan twenty-two-one through twenty-twenty-four recommended.
So.
Now we're gonna have race to see who says it, so. Can I get a, any questions on this before we approve? Once again, Superintendent, you had a very detailed list for us, thank you very much. Can I get a show of hands to approve motion? Let the record show the motion passes six zero zero. Alright, on to our reports section, this is like the Jen Willard show, isn't it?
Yeah.
Everything you should.
I know.
Superintendent, you have a report for us?
I do, so the first thing I wanted to do was give you a little snapshot of our enrollment where we are now compared to last school year. So what was interesting is I was expecting a much bigger drop than we, where we are right now, because last year we had a hundred and sixteen students in our graduating class, and this year we only have ninety-four, which is a dip of twenty-two children, that's a significant change. And our kindergarten numbers have been coming in for the past few years at eight, like second grade is at eighty-seven, first grade is at ninety-four, and kindergarten last year was at eighty-five. Well, this year kindergarten is at a hundred and three, which is a plus eighteen for kindergarten.
Only down eight.
So, well, whoops, we've had dips in, you know, increases and decreases in other grades as well, but we are only down this year by thirteen students, which is a lot better than I anticipated, because I thought we were gonna have you know, the graduating class with the kindergarten, which is usually about a twenty, almost could be like a forty student dip. But, and with this senior class being lower, I was expecting the enrollment to be about forty less. So when we ran the numbers and we were only thirteen less, I was pleasantly surprised. So again, that was the beginning of last school year compared to this school year. It's broken down by grade. We've had increases in first grade this year, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. And we saw a one student decline in second grade, and we did see in ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth more of the decrease in student enrollment.
Is that because they're going to specialty schools like we've been talking about last year with our
Yeah, so.
At the high school level where they're transferring out over to those?
Yeah, interesting, I thought we would, we usually see a much greater significant dip between eighth grade and ninth grade? It's usually double digits, because kids go to Pope Francis, they go to prep schools, they go to Smith, they'll go to Westfield Technical Academy, we usually see a significant decline. And this year we only saw a three student decline, which I've never seen one that low in all my years here.
Now, the ninth grade class, I believe is a pretty large class to begin with, so I don't know if that factors into the fact there's less of a discrepancy, that they were just a bigger class overall.
One eighteen to one fifteen.
Oh, so it's not that, that much.
Do you guys track new students to the dip, like, I know you're, you've got overall numbers here, I'm just wondering whether all of this construction and housing that's been going on the last couple of years, whether we're starting to see a sort of jump into that because of these new families coming into town?
And we have three, three more coming at the end of September, three more, three more coming at the end of September. Yeah, yeah, so we have, and we have three more coming that we know of.
Alright, so then it'll be down to like ten then?
Yeah. Granted, this is ebb and flow, this is ebb and flow, but I wanted to give you.
No, but this is not a bad, this is a good report.
This is, this was very encouraging, based on the trends of the past few years, this was super encouraging. Opening a school, I wanted to tell you that the feel in the schools, and I don't know if you two can account, like, talk about it, but we've been in all the different schools and all the teachers are knocking on wood. They're saying that this has been the best opening of school they have ever had, and the kids are so excited, and it just and I, and I think the best, one of the best words someone said was uneventful. And there's nothing better than uneventful in a school district for the beginning of a school year, I know it doesn't sound like an exciting word to other people, but uneventful is really exciting. It just is. My, one of my highlights was I was walking through a third grade classroom, I always make an effort to go in on the first day of school and welcome the third graders here from Woodland School to Powdermilk. And as I was in one of the third grade classrooms, and one of the kids looked up and said, we're gonna sit on the carpet, I haven't sat on the carpet since kindergarten, and I'm like, wow, like, think about that, wow, right?
That's sweet.
He's in a different school and he hasn't sat on the carpet since kindergarten. I'm like.
Is that because of COVID?
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, it's the little things that we took for granted, that I think everyone is just starting to appreciate so much more that it just feels right. PD went really well at the beginning of the school year for the staff, we, like I said, we finished our ten module science of reading. We also offered, for the request of teachers, content-specific PD at the regional school. Feedback was, it was nice to be in person. People felt much more engaged with in-person PD, everything was zoom, 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 that we forget about the personal relationships that we make, and that when we connect with people sitting in a room, just like our kids do. Our devices, yeah, on the full rollout, of computers, grades three through twelve, all have their district-issued computer. And iReady is open on Monday, and our DIBL screening is going to be starting next Monday. So Amy took some really nice pictures to give you a snapshot of what, the faces and the joy on our kids on the first day of school, and parents sent awesome pictures of their kids, I didn't know that was a thing, as time has evolved, with the little, did you have a chart?
Thing that your parents sent a picture of you that was.
Oh yeah, every.
My son was on half the bus.
Did you do this? I know you sent a picture, did you give them the little?
No, I didn't give them anything, but I got a text, they dad, why?
Mine, yeah.
Yeah, once they get older, they don't appreciate, I got told do not send the picture in.
But your wife did.
We didn't talk, we didn't talk.
Did you see Aubrey's comment, she's like, oh my god.
Yeah, take it down. Aubrey's coming on my. Take it down.
Take it down, take it down.
Now, the coolest one I saw, it wasn't at this district, but one of my friends in Connecticut, her two kids, her youngest graduated last year. So she's been taking pictures on her front step of the kids every year, this year she took a picture of an empty stool. And said, this is the first time in like fifteen years that I haven't had a kid going to school, I just thought I'd take a picture of it. So, alright, unfilled position.
So I know this is a big topic on the news, and so we do have some unfilled positions, so at Woodland School, we are. So I know this is a big topic on the news and um, so uh we do have some unfilled positions. So at Woodland School, we are still looking for three paraprofessionals. Um, if you're interested, um, even if you don't have the um, uh, parapro, we are looking for people. We can get you trained over the course of the year. Um, we can take you on as a long-term staff for the year, get you trained into a permanent position. Uh, Powder Mill School, they still are one pair short and a building they substitute short. And at SRS, um, two special ed teachers short and one paraprofessional short. Not sure, I don't know, we, we're in the middle of hiring a BCBA for Patty Collins position. I don't know if we're in the negotiating phase, but that potentially could be another open position if this person doesn't sign. Um, it's really hard right now um to get staff. And the hardest positions to fill right now are actually special education and ELL, English Language Learner. Um, not a lot of people have them. These teachers are getting their picks wherever they want to go. They're getting whatever job they want. Um, so we're really working, um, and we have an advocacy, advocacy group um, of Western Mass Superintendents. Couldn't meet today because we had admin team, but we met last Wednesday. And we're really going to um, talk to Desi about understanding the needs of Western Mass and that they're not the same as Eastern Mass. Um, trying to get a point four ELL teacher for a smaller school district, close to impossible to do. Um, as again, we are going through our tiered focus monitoring review this year and they're going to be looking at our um, special ed licenses. They're going to be looking at our teachers with ELL licenses. You know, we're, we're doing our best. We have, you know, but this is, this is the world we're in right now where we're, you're not always going to get licensed teachers to even apply to. Um, compared to other school districts, we're in a really good place. Um, and uh, it's just great to be back and it just feels like it's a bunch, a positive beginning of a school year. I just I vow I'm not going to be in my office like I was for the past few years. I will be out, I will be in classrooms, I will be with kids. It's where I need to be. It's what energizes me and I need to see the teaching and the learning effect. I think I was in, are your three kids in the same math class this year? I was in a math class with your kids and I was in a math class with your two kids yesterday. So, um, it's just nice to see the kids. Um, and it talked to them, so it's great. But that's all I have.
Super. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Um, yeah, next up is Mr. Presley. I thought I saw, I thought I saw his name up there. Is he looking to zoom in a report or?
Well, I, I'm here, Mr. Chairman, but I, I do not have a report for you this evening.
That's, I didn't, I was expecting to not see your name up there, but I didn't want to zoom by this. Mr. Presley, if you had a, one of those awesome glowing reports for us, but that's okay.
One word, explain Portugal, one word.
Uh, I think Mr. Stevenson just used the word awesome.
Can't, can't do that. That's a, that's a Massachusetts word, something else.
He's, one word. We're waiting and he, and he won't stop until you give him a word.
Fa- fabulous. Amazing.
That's a fifty cent word, right?
It's a real word.
All right, so along that line though, um, I just wanted to, I mean, we haven't, we talked about it at the last meeting. Are the um, job position for Mr. Presley, is that now closed?
I have another new business right here on my thing.
No, no, that's okay. I'm like, wait a minute, did I miss that?
No, I, I did tell them what.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Presley. We're glad you're back home, safe and sound. Hope you feel better and we'll see you soon. Um, all right, subcommittees. Negotiations, we have a meeting. No news is good news or we're still ongoing?
October, we get that email, twelve, I think.
Eleven, eleven.
I know.
October.
Yeah.
Desiree, have you identified some committees that you want to be?
I'm really, I don't have a preference, so I'm willing to fill a void wherever you need. I, I'm really.
So we have a void, we have a void on the, on the finance subcommittee.
The meeting's adjourned.
So we have, we have a void on the finance subcommittee.
Okay.
Um, there is a void on the technology committee. That was, that was gone. If you want to go onto that, be sure, then you go. Um, that the, the commitment for technology is usually rather light. Um, that's a good one to be on.
Sign me up.
If there's, let's see, what else was Jonathan on? Uh, negotiations. Yeah, well, we've mentioned finance, negotiations has an opening.
Okay.
Um.
And the good news is you don't have to jump in now at the end date for teachers. So we just, if we start a new round of negotiations, you can jump in. You don't have to jump in now.
Perfect.
Just, if you want to just think about that, you do not need to commit tonight. If you want to let Amy know before the next meeting, um, and what we'll do is we'll let you know when um, when, when the upcoming subcommittee meetings are for the, we can get you into those roles.
Alright, sounds good to me.
Alright, sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's, that's a good, that was, that's funny. Uh, finance.
So hang on, back up. Where are we with negotiations? Are we still working on settling a teacher contract?
October eleventh is our next move.
Yes.
Okay, are we close?
I think so.
I think so.
Yes, everything, yeah, we're good. We're up to, we're up to here. Yeah, I know.
No, these are the last.
Yes, you can sign. Um, all right, LTVEC, uh, collaboratives.
Uh, meeting is on the twenty first.
Okay. I don't know if, yeah, you have one, I don't. We're, we're the corporations quiet right now. We, yeah, it's quarterly. We had a warrant that went around here last week that we needed to sign. So other than that, not much. Policy, we've already done that update. We are waiting um, info from Lieutenant Font at the state and then we'll be turning that on, let's figure it on pretty, pretty good. Pretty quickly. Uh, buildings and grounds.
I still gotta catch up with somebody.
Okay.
Do you want to say, wasn't there something like on the docket for buildings and grounds that you wanted to get us involved in?
They.
Fields or something to that?
That's sort of along the lines with finance where we're, where we're meeting, we had a first meeting with the gentleman that is going to come up with a, what do you want to call it, a master? Sort of like a master plan type of thing.
Yeah.
He's going to get something put together for us so that we can review it. Ideally, on that committee, we have finance and buildings and grounds. And that would give us three people to sit on both. I'm on finance, you're on buildings and grounds. So the three of us um, can be part of that and we were not over our quorum. Um, but that is in the infancy. We're now at this point waiting for a response back. And I'm sure um, by our next meeting, Mr. Presley will probably have an update for us on that one.
Cause I took a picture of the geese that are, that are habitating on the baseball field.
That's, that's, that's.
I was gonna say, and they did close down the lakes for a little while, so.
Canada has to invade something. We're sending our air force down here to start the initial invasion. Um, all right, ILT, anything yet?
We have our meeting, so I'm just looking at, I don't think our first one still is, is it November?
Yeah.
Why is it the first one isn't it still November?
I don't think it's still, yeah, for some reason there's no info. I thought it was June, that's why I was checking.
And that's only got two, so anything on there? Um, Desiree, with two people, if there's something there that you're interested in. You can by all means, reach out, step up, you can jump into those. Um, wellness? Okay, wow. That's obviously, that might be.
That's lunch, but we're going to be back to in-person and I believe we're starting lunch.
Oh, is going back to lunches again?
That, that may be a good one because apparently there's lunch. Um, Sped?
Nothing. We don't, I don't know anything, so.
Okay, um, technology.
Not that I know of yet, but we want to give the new guys some time to kind of get out of the meeting and then, yeah.
Perfect, perfect. Uh, capital committee, Mr. Job?
Not yet.
Master plan?
Yeah, so we've been meeting all summer, uh, just about every other Thursday, meeting on the fifteenth. And the survey went out and the date is now closed and you will figure out the numbers of people that participated in the survey and what the next step should be for the future of Southwood in one place.
Did you get a good response on the survey?
Not bad. Uh, we yeah, we were hoping for I can't say percentage wise, but I could say to get at least a five hundred person participate and we did, I think close to six hundred. You know, typically it's like one percent of the town participates in anything.
Right.
So, I think this time we, we know like one dot four.
It's growth.
But I will say that, that group, you know, they really put a lot of attention and focus into um, making Southwood a, a better place. Like honestly, like I really enjoy that. Yeah.
All right, athletics. Um, I got a phone call from Mr. Um, Carmel yesterday just for, with an update. We're gonna have a, a set of meeting up for next week. Um, all the coaches spots are done. Uh, we do have a boys soccer team, which was one of the questions that we had a couple of weeks ago. Um, the uh, new athletic director is doing a fantastic job. He's very happy with everything that's going on so far. I know they had a, either today or tomorrow, they have a MIAA meeting. Um, they're going to put forward, they are looking to do the collaborative again for the hockey team. Um, and then I think the only question I'm seeing is just um, athletic trainer, which they're gonna touch base, that's gonna be a discussion.
It, it, it is and Steve can address it even more. We have like done everything we possibly have.
To find you. Yeah. Yeah, so it's, it's one of those, it's look, it, it's healthcare right now and, and I mean you can't find anybody from a therapist perspective, P T O T speech, it's just very tough to find athletic trainers or even a lower number than that. Um, so I know you guys are, got fingers out everywhere, so hopefully we can find somebody or at least piecemeal something together. Um, legislative liaison, that's.
November for you.
Yep. Is anybody, I'm, I'm booked and looking to go, is anybody else looking to go to that?
I may, depending on the baby.
That one conflicted, Jim.
My granddaughter, my grandson.
So either way, one, I'll be going this year. I really, I, I wanted to see what it looked like and so I've already got hotels booked and everything ready to go. So that's November, what, first, second, third, something like that, right? Yeah.
Did you go last year?
I did.
You went last year, right? And you?
I had, yeah, yeah.
It was a good time. And Ted's been there so many times, he's got a plaque there, so.
Yes, we actually, we did receive a major award at the um, Mass Conference. It was my first year here. You received the lifetime achievement award for being um, a longstanding school committee member across the state of Massachusetts.
Awesome.
Yeah, a huge award there. It's awesome.
You were here on the schools' record.
All right.
Get just three back out of the second.
Right, our second public comment, there's still nobody here. Um, but I do want to acknowledge Marissa's here. It didn't, you came in a little late, but I wanted to.
Yeah, I read the wrong sign.
Okay, that's fine. I wanted to give you the floor if there's anything. Lucas did a fantastic job reading your little monologue, but. That's good. Anything for us or how, how's your impression of the school year so far?
I'm a senior, so that's good.
There we go.
No, no, it has been going good. It's definitely, it's just, it was like, like nothing happened. It's like, not in a bad way.
Right, right. It's just really weird to say that. It's just like.
Uneventful.
Yeah, it's not an event.
My words, but that was.
That's good. So you're hoping, I'm assuming like all seniors for superintendent to be calling school off as many times this year as they can, right?
It smells that much. I can't get my car out of the driveway.
They don't have to make those days up.
We had cold days before, like I'm so cold.
It's so cute to see you as a senior now because like last year you were, you know, you had your glasses on, you had your hair in a ponytail and you were like in the notes. This year you're like, I'm a senior. Surprised your feet are on the table.
All right, old business. Got anything for old business? You have something for new business?
New business, one. I just wanted to share with you, these are um, Woodland School's pins for the year. It's called onward and upwards. And um, she gave everybody a pin on the school committee, so for their theme at Woodland School this year. And I do want to talk because the postings for the Director of Finance and Operations closed last Friday. Um, I did go through and did an initial screen um, this afternoon of the applicants. Um, I did call our attorney to ask them about the process. He said we go one of two ways. If you have um, a a lot, you could do an initial paper screen, then do an interview and then do the full committee interview. Um, if there's not a lot of applicants and you just want to do like a paper screen and then um, choose the applicants and then go right into the full committee. Um, it's your choice, it's not mine. We only have ten applicants.
Well, that's better than what we thought.
Oh, way better than what we thought. Um, so you let me know, I, my thought would be the finance um, committee would do the paper screen or the first round of interviews since they work so closely with finance and they would get like a really solid read on somebody that they're going to be working with and that they can trust. Just my recommendation. Um, but uh, ten applicants, you let us know how you want to handle it. If you under the paper screen and then do one round of interviews. If you have too many that you can't narrow down, don't have to make a decision today. So what I would recommend is we get packets together, the finance subcommittee comes in, looks at them, depending on the number that you want to interview. Um, we can decide if it's going to go to the full committee or if we should do an initial round with just the um, thing count.
The only thing I'm worried about waiting is that Mr. Presley's last day is November.
Twenty sixth.
Okay, so, so we're, so we've got two months and we, and ideally we want somebody in place prior to him leaving. So I would recommend that we don't wait another two weeks before we make a decision as to what we want to do. I agree with you. I think it should be the finance committee looking at the first room. So that would put Ted and I on there.
Okay.
Um, we have room for one more. If somebody wants to do that, think about it. You don't have to wait the two weeks, let Amy know. For if nobody wants to go. Okay.
I would, I would kick this thing off. I'll give you a second to you.
Yep, me, I'm with you Ted. I don't, I don't want to wait. I want to get this person in this room as soon as possible.
So what I'm going to have Annie do is I'm going to have her put three packets together of all the information. It's a little bit less because we um, in education, we go on school spring, so it's got like twenty seven papers. Um, most of our applicants came from Indeed uh, because of the, the terms of position. So it's really just a resume, um, and maybe a cover letter. So it's, it's not going to be as deep of a paper screen as you've had to do in the, as school spring as you've had to do in the past. So um, I will have Annie get those ready. Um, and maybe if we can get the paper screened out in the next two weeks at our next meeting, we can talk about setting up interviews.
You know, like, how, like, I guess I'm currently, normally I've been part of this, Pat and I did this last year for two, two. We tried to get three or four or five for finalists. Do we want to have that many for finalists?
We need to see what your paper.
We have to see what's in front of us first, right? There may only be two people that we're seeing.
You have, right, you got ten and you could get really lucky and have eight of them be like, wow, these are potential. Or you know, you could be like, nobody's qualified on except you.
So if Annie can get those, I know she's got to send out an email to Pat, Ted and I to sign off on confidentiality. If we can get those done tomorrow or the next day, that way we can get, I'd like to have the three of us looking at these resumes before the weekend.
Great.
So that we can, hopefully pick a date. Next week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday for me is, what are you guys looking like next week at the end of the week? Monday, Tuesday, how about a town?
I'm good.
I'm good, you're good.
Ted's good. So if we can maybe get a meeting Wednesday, Thursday or Friday next week where we can come in with Annie and do the paper screen. That'll get us a head start, that we have something that we can present to the committee at the next meeting.
Yeah, you want as much time for.
Oh, no, agreed.
Does Steve get to weigh in on this one?
No, I mean, in terms of like what type of certifications, what type of, you know, background.
What can be joshed, same.
Yeah, might fit best with, you know.
They just look at the job form.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Cowardly comment.
So, so with like, you know, the application through the school, would any of the applicants get bounced? You know, in other words, like he or she didn't meet certain criteria and that, so all the candidates are in and met.
Like vetted?
The.
We're not vetting anything. We're giving every single person a reply.
We may get eight people that don't even call, right? We've got ten that are.
Yeah, so that's, I, I didn't know what there was. Yeah, so that's, I I didn't know if there was a screening process prior to them coming.
That too.
Don't mind me.
That's the paper.
There's not forty five that threaten me.
Now, you're, you only, there's only ten applicants.
It's only gonna take us long to go through ten.
Only ten, you'd be surprised.
Well, we don't have to interview all ten. We can look at them and go, yeah. We don't want to, we want to talk to these three.
To be fair and.
If there's misspellings, kick them out.
I'm not worried about telling them. They, they say that three or two is in, then that's problem, right?
They hit the date wrong.
I know, wow, that'll be good. Alright, anything else?
So I will have packets and confidentiality packets ready for you. Um since we have to um do the final interviews as a full school committee, I, my thought process process right now is to get some potential dates for the end of September that all of you are potentially available for, so that we do the final interviews with people after your paper screening.
Yeah, that'll be a special meeting.
Yes.
Yeah. So we'll, I think what we'll do is let's see what's happening in two weeks is to see what we've got. But yeah, you may want to look at that last week of September and see what everybody's schedule looks like. Amy can send one of those lovely.
So any vacation requests Mr. Presley has up until the twenty sixth of November is denied, right?
He just used everything to go to Portugal.
So we have the twenty sixth of September.
I guess so, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll take a look. Alright, any else? Perfect. Alright, look at that. I think it's record. Um I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
So I get a show of hands during the meeting. The record shows the motion passes seven zero here. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a fantastic evening. We'll see you two weeks.